Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to our city council meeting. Please rise for our flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Army.
Okay, council, we've got a big consent calendar, A through I. You know the drill. If there's something you'd like to discuss further, let me know. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, A through I.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Galbraith and a second by Councilmember Waggoner to approve the consent calendar, A through I. Any further discussion? Oh, well. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, pass or no pass. Okay. Wish you were here last time. We would have had a world record, but I had to do a swearing in. Did four last council meetings, and I'm going to do this one for Katie Wilson. Right by the podium, on me either. Stand over there maybe, so they can see where you're standing.
She just came out of the cab.
Raise your right hand. I, Katie Wilson.
I, Katie Wilson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Then I'm a citizen of the United States.
Then I'm a citizen of the United States.
And a state of Washington.
And a state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the constitutional laws of the state of Washington.
And the constitutional laws of the state of Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly faithfully.
Truly faithfully.
And impartially perform the duties of the office of police officer.
And impartially perform the duties of the police officer.
Good. And in for the city of Cedar Woolley.
And in for the city of Cedar Woolley.
Skagit County, Washington.
Skagit County, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Well done. That was great.
I'm sorry.
You're very excited. All right. How about that?
Thank you.
Sixteen now?
We're getting up to full force. And her family's here, too. Okay, we will go to public comment. This is something that you can comment that's not on the agenda. Limit your time to three to five minutes. State your name and address for the record.
Yes, that's you.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Fernando, 805 B Metcalf Street, Simplesilver and more. And I just had a request, something for you to think about. You know, we have, most of you know, we have a couple of panhandlers in town. And generally speaking, they're fairly harmless, kind of obnoxious, but fairly harmless. But something happened yesterday that concerned me, and that was with the new Bank of America ATM machine, which is right next to me. A mom and a daughter got out of their car and went up to the ATM machine. And the older gentleman came up and talked to her, and she kept trying to, you know, turn away, but he was telling her his sad story of the day, which was, you know, he hadn't seen his daughter in a long time and needed gas money, and on and on and on. And I thought, you know what? So I stood outside, just so that I would be visible and she would know she wouldn't be out there by herself. But that can be very intimidating. You have your child there with you, and you don't really know this person, and you don't know how safe you really are. And so it's been on my mind, I wanted to ask if you could come up with something to disallow that, at least in that area. I talked to Ellen Gamsen, who's the Mount Vernon Downtown Merchant Association Coordinator today, and asked her what they did with situations like that. And she said, you know, the different merchants can eighty-six them essentially from their public space or kind of in front of their stores. And I'm wondering if we could do something like that, some sort of an ordinance that would disallow that within a certain number of feet from the ATM machine. I don't know whether you need to do it with all ATM machines then, or just that one, or what. That's for you guys to figure out. But if it's after hours, you know, yesterday it was, yeah, it was bright, it's light until whatever, 8:30, you know? But what about in November and December and January, when it's dark and people aren't outside walking, and you go up to these machines, and it's just kind of intimidating? One of two things will happen. They will either not come to Cedar Woolley at all and go to the bank, or they're just going to feel intimidated and it leaves a real bad taste in their mouth. So I would like it if you could think about what we could do to make it a little safer zone, safe zone, whatever you want to call it. But just be aware of that, and maybe just having the police officers talk to them and say, that is not the place to do that. But I don't know that we have requests for that. So that's.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Joyce Tomasino, 704 Sauk Mountain Drive. And a year ago, I called engineering and Dave Lee came out and looked at our, back the creek is, the bank is undermined, and the soil on top is very soft. He agreed it's very dangerous. People cut through there, and he was going to talk to somebody and get back to me. Nobody got back to me. So a couple of weeks ago, I called Mark Feiburger, and he said he would get back to me, and you never got back to me either. So I'm wondering if somebody is going to do something about this. It's from the drainage ditch that runs back there, and it looks like it has let go and has undermined the bank quite badly. It's dangerous back there. So if somebody could do something about it, or...
We'll look at it tomorrow. I'll talk to Mark about it.
Yeah, something needs to be done.
I know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Name 704 Sauk.
704.
Dennis O'Neil and I reside at 109 Telkot Street. I just, earlier this year, we had a tree go down between Metcalf and Wall-E Street, the alley that runs behind the Eagles there. And it was a road-blocking situation, had to be taken care of pretty quickly. And, you know, city crews got in there, I think it was the city got in there and chopped it all up and hauled away a lot of it. It looked pretty good, but for some reason, they left about, it's got to be six or seven feet tall, and it's got to be, I think it's six feet tall, and it's got to be about four inches, four feet round, and the stump. And it's on the city right-of-way, so I think the city's responsible for it. If anything should happen, and it will eventually, because you come out from the alley, you come through the alley heading west, and I live about a block, I live one street over, and I go through the alley quite a bit, and I really try to avoid it, because you cannot see those cars coming from the high school. It's a total blocked vision, and somebody's just going to get nailed. You have to go, you literally have to go about halfway out into Wall-E to see anybody coming from the left. And it's something that should be resolved before school starts, because that's going to be a real nasty situation, and I don't know.
Is that the one over by Wall-E Street?
Yeah.
Now, if I remember, wasn't there a dispute on, we didn't think it was in our right-of-way.
The property owner took care of those trees. That was not the city's responsibility.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Well, whoever's responsibility is, maybe the city will want to get hold of him, because it's probably one of those city things where you have to prod the guy and maybe go in there and do it and bail him, because that tree is not going anywhere, and I'm sure he's not going to cut it unless, you know, I mean, he doesn't trim along Wall-E unless somebody from the city gets on him, and that's got to be done again, too, because they block that. You just can't see anything coming out of that alley to the left. Brenda can go by, you know, she lives around the street.
Dennis, I literally just did fifteen minutes ago, I came out that way and I noticed that.
And you can't see anything from the left.
Yeah.
It's not, in fact, it's, there's about, if somebody sends a letter out to them, there's two more right next to it, there are smaller stumps that also block the vision. And I get, you know, I'm not telling you what to do, but boy, I tell you, that's just something waiting to happen. You know, I like having stumps left sometimes, they don't hurt my view, but my, but, and this one is just, you just know, and somebody's going to get hit really hard, because that traffic on Wall-E, especially if it's a kid coming out of school, they're moving thirty, thirty-five miles an hour, and somebody will get out there trying to see what's coming and get clobbered. So that's all I had to say. Thank you. We'll go take a look at it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? See, we'll close public comment, and we will vote to unfinished business. I have six in this agreement with Waste Management, and this is Aaron.
So I put on your council base the mailer that went out this last week, I guess it was. As you can see, we are getting closer to our September 1 Go Live date, and in fact, next week is the big week for cart removal. So you're going to see a team of unmarked rental trucks, I think about four of them, it sounds like, leapfrogging around town, being chased. Well, actually, there'll be a waste management recycling truck being followed by cart removal rental trucks, and maybe some riders and others, followed by the city rigs. And so the waste truck will empty them, these unmarked rental trucks will pick them up, and then we'll be following behind delivering new ones, starting next week. And then the following week, all of the yard waste bins will have the same treatment. So there's going to be a lot of excitement around town on that, that front. What you've got in the packet for tonight is the contract with Waste Management. We actually approved the first contract we needed under the consent agenda, which was for green waste. This one you hadn't seen before, so I put it in the regular section of the packet, so you can look at it. What we've got is a September 1 Go Live date. We're looking at an initial cost of $40 a ton. This will allow the city to take any commingled recyclables and others by agreement out to Bay Ridge Drive and out by the transfer station and deposit our materials. And then waste will actually, I guess they compact it using like a mini excavator, and then they truck it to Woodinville, where they run it through their materials recovery facility. And then they'll, they take 100% of the risk of the commodity value or disposal cost. So it's one of those trade-offs where if we were to maintain the material ourselves, the possibility exists that we could sell it. The possibility also exists that we could pay more to get rid of it. So this is a balancing of risk to give us a location to take it, cost us $40 a ton rather than the $89, $8 a ton we pay at the transfer station.
That's huge.
Let's see, we agreed to, I think it was a three-year deal, if I recall correctly, with annual adjustments based upon the CPI. We have a requirement that we have only a certain amount of non-recyclable material, so contamination. So it'll be incumbent upon our drivers, and they do that already with garbage. If, for example, you were to put a bunch of grass in your garbage can, you know, they see that when it goes into the chute using their cameras onboard, and then they'll tag you and you get a bill for putting grass in the garbage. The same will be true for recyclables. You know, they're supposed to be unbagged and loose, so if we start seeing black bags and whatnot, they'll see it on the camera, they can hop out of their truck, open the bag if it's garbage, then they address it with our customer, because the purer our stream is, the more valuable it is in the recycling market. And if we do exceed the percentage of garbage in the stream during the audit period, then we have a penalty rate that goes on till the next audit period. So there's economic tie to it. And you can see the $110 cost for disposal under that section in 3.4. It's more than what we pay for disposal here in Skagit County. That's because that's what it costs for garbage disposal in Woodinville. Other than that, I think Leo's happy, and Patsy's had a chance to work through it. We've had a positive experience with Waste Management and their public sector liaison, who's the mayor of Duval and his side job, as well as their attorney. I worked directly with their attorney out of Arizona, I think it was.
I think the mayor of Duval is his side job.
Yeah. Yeah, you're probably right. So we're looking for action tonight, so we can have this signed by Waste this week and in place for September 1 Go Live date.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the attached agreement with Waste Management for the acceptance and processing of recyclables.
You. I thought you were you. Okay.
Take your pick.
Yeah, I'm going to spread it out. Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Waggoner, a second by Councilmember Sandstrom to approve the attached agreement with Waste Management for the acceptance and processing of recyclables. Any further discussion? I've got a question. On page 71, it talks about annual rate adjustments, it talks about the Consumer Price Index. What Consumer Price Index?
It's the, let's see, it's an all U.S. utilities index, and it should be, yeah, it's the all urban consumers, water and sewer and trash services. So that's a U.S. statistical measure, CPI-U, water, sewer, trash.
It's up under 3.2.
And I, of course, when I read this, I said, well, gee whiz, we want Seattle, Birmingham, Tacoma, and their lawyer cleverly pointed out that they don't break that measure out by geographic region.
Which is probably good, because usually ours is higher than Texas or somewhere else.
And I didn't, I didn't actually look to compare how the water, sewer, trash services measure was bearing compared to others.
It just caught my eye that it would be, and that's why I read it, it's probably a national thing. We don't do anything unnational, do we?
No, generally, we don't. We use the Seattle, Birmingham, Tacoma measure almost exclusively in our, in our other contexts.
National rates do tend to be a little more stable. They don't go up and down as sharply as the local one.
And when we talk about contamination, that's when garbage gets in, right?
Exactly right. Some people do that. They literally will throw trash in the recycle bin, and that's where that whole issue of our drivers keeping a close watch on the cameras is important, so they can red-tag them and, you know, get them to put the garbage in the garbage and the recycling in the recycling.
So if too much garbage gets in there, it can be a huge penalty.
Yeah, well, you can see the formula in, what is it, 3.4. Basically, you have that, there's a 5% acceptable level, and then the formula would establish how much your penalty is for anything above that, at that $110 a ton rate. The cleaner our stream becomes, and this is something that's important, you know, as we take this thing over and work with our customers to get people to do the right thing with the recycling, we should be in a good position in the renewal time period to drive a better price, because right now, they know what's in the stream, and Leo tells me he doesn't think it's all that great. And so that's something that will benefit us if we can get our customers to, you know, put only recyclables in. You know, if you had a, like, maybe a 2% or a 1% contamination rate, it's more valuable than if you're hitting right at the 5 all the time.
Okay, so when you say it's more valuable, what does that mean? It means more sellable?
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, what you want to think about with this is, you know, we're agreeing to pay $40 a ton under this agreement versus the $89. For $89 a ton, it goes in a box, hops on a rail, goes to Roosevelt Regional Landfill on the Columbia River and goes into the hole. For $40 a ton, it goes into a box, is trucked to Woodinville, where they run it through a mechanized materials recovery facility. So they've got the air puffers to blow the plastic out, the magnets to pull metals out, they're able to pull the glass out of the bottom since it kind of drops there. They sort out the paper, the cardboard. At the end of the MRF process, they have garbage, then they have a pile of mixed paper, cardboard, glass, probably mixed glass in that case, aluminum, other metals, et cetera, that they then sell on the marketplace. And so every bit of garbage that goes in there costs them in two ways. One, it's a per-ton cost to get rid of it, and two, you know, people are throwing, like, let's say you throw, you know, wet stuff in there, you know, you ruin some of the commodity value of your mixed paper and cardboard. So it's a twofold thing. And that is, that's the other reason you'll see in here, we don't have all recyclables. We're committing to all of our commingled recyclables. We will also be collecting source-separated recyclables primarily from our business accounts. So dumpster's full of nothing but cardboard. You know, Leo's intent there is to actually sell those. So rather than paying to get rid of them, we would expect to get a check for bringing them to somebody.
What, I don't quite understand how they configure, because I assume they dump everything together and haul it to Woodinville and do it. So how do they know what's Cedar Woolley and what's Mount Vernon and...
For the audit?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the audit procedure's actually in there, and what they do is they notify us in advance. We're allowed to have observers, and they take our material, pop it into our container that day, and we go to Woodinville together, and they dump it onto their tipping floor and they manually sort it. So it's actually set aside, manually sorted for the composition audit.
Well, you can always go through it and find address. But there is a reason, there is a way, they specifically separate Cedar Woolley.
Yeah, so they won't commingle our waste for that day, you know, or that week, whatever it is that they save up in their transport container, and then they just pop that onto the tipping floor and start raking through it.
So if you, if you have one bad day a month, and that happens to be the day, you're screwed.
That could be problematic, yeah.
But if you have three bad days and it's not that day, you're okay?
It's just like an IRS audit.
Jeez.
Some days, some years you make it, some years you don't. And it's by weight. So that's the other thing, is they weigh the container going in, and then they pull out the non-recyclables, and that material gets weighed. That's how you determine the percentage of contamination.
Wow, that was pretty detailed. Thank you.
Yeah, well, if we get an audit, which we may or may not actually get, you know, if somebody's excited to go see a MRF, let me know. You can go down and watch them. Get, you know, official, like, Uncle Woolie hat inspector and a clipboard.
I have my own collection of hard hats, so.
Yeah, all right, well, we'll see if they do it, and it might be interesting to get a tour of their Woodinville facility at the same time as we keep them honest.
Okay.
Mark? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes. Okay, pass or no pass. We'll go to item seven. This is transportation grant approval and match, and this would be Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our memorandum presenting to you the projects that we're intending to submit applications to the Transportation Improvement Board for this year. The grant applications are due on August 21st at the end of the day. We have five different projects that we're planning to apply under three programs. They're delineated in your memorandum. The largest, of course, being the Jamison Arterial Extension to SR9 project. As you can see, our preliminary estimate's 2.2 million. That particular project, we believe we've already met the match requirement for that with the combination of the donated right-of-way and the federal funds that we already have allocated for that project through the Council of Government. So there wouldn't be an additional city match, fortunately, for that project. And we, of course, have already contributed to that project on the design stage, which is separately funded with a federal grant and city match. So that one's in pretty good shape. The other projects, under the urban sidewalk project, we have a piece of sidewalk that is missing on the south side of Ferry from Highway 20 to Borsast Street. That, as part of that, and we'll also apply for a section on Jamison from Third Avenue West to the tennis courts. What that one will do is complete the path that will be constructed as part of the Jamison project all the way from Crossroads Road to Third Street, and that'll provide a complete path all along there for the high school students to stay off of their route. If any of you have ever been on Jamison during the busy time of the day, they have diagonal parking on the south side of the gym building there, and kids have to actually walk out in the street to get around that. So this is, this is a pretty good project. I'm going to be meeting with the school district, hopefully in the next day or two, and discussing this project in more detail with them. I've already had a preliminary discussion, to see if they'll contribute to the match on that particular project. And so that's, that's our intention.
Mark?
Yes?
May I just ask, is there a way to preserve those trees? I mean, like, to kind of, I don't know.
There's a row of arbor...
Dog around it?
Along there, and what our intention is, is to move those trees inbound. There's a fence behind them, we've moved the fence and the trees as a part of the project.
So is that, moving the trees, does that add to the cost, or, I mean, would it be, seems like it'd be cheaper just to push it out two feet and push us home.
There's no room. The trees are built right at the back of the curb, are planted right at the back of the curb, and the fence is right behind them, so there's no room, literally no room for a sidewalk there with that existing configuration. So they have to be moved in order to get a walk-in or take the parking out, which I don't think the district's interested in. We didn't even propose that. So, but we'll discuss that with them in detail. That's the purpose for our contact with them on that.
And if you were to put the sidewalk behind the trees and the fence, and at least in my mind, it would create maybe a safety situation with, you know, people walking where they can't be seen. It could be problematic just for kind of campus security purposes.
Oh, yeah, that's true, too.
You get new trees.
The other projects are the arterial preservation program. We've received grants two other years on this program. It wasn't funded last year, but the prior year, we had funds from this program to do the Third Street paving that we did in front of the high school, which we actually built last year, but the funds were awarded the previous section. And then we did the work on John Liner Road three years ago under that program. So this year, we're applying for Ferry Street from Highway 20 to Metcalf, and there's also a short section on Township south of Highway 20 down to Waldron that's never been repaired since all the sewer work was done back in '08 and '09, and so we're tacking that one on to this particular one. That program, they can award it by block. We actually apply and list the blocks involved, so it may or may not fund the whole thing, but they actually have a good amount of money under that program this year. Legislature and the transportation package gave Tib 14 million dollars specifically for this. Normally, they've only had five, so we're fairly optimistic that we might be able to pick up some of these preservation dollars to do this. So the request for you tonight is to authorize staff to submit these applications and to commit to the required match requirements for the sidewalk and the preservation program, and I've listed those in the details you have there. It's a 20% match requirement for the sidewalk program and a 10% for the arterial improvement program. So that is what we're looking for. I give you detail of the various funding sources we have for this. Just a little note of explanation. We discussed grants in some detail at our March meeting of the work session, and council at that time, we notified you that we were pretty much out of sources of funds for match dollars. That situation has proved a little bit. We did close out the Highway 20 roundabout project, the Cook Road project, and came out a little better than we thought. We had a few dollars left, but not many. And so just looking through that, we've taken in a little money in our impact fee fund. We completely had expended it by the end of that project, and we have, with the various houses that are being built up on Duke's Hill and the like, we have brought in about $22,000 so far on that. There'll be some more coming in over the course of the year. We've also been robbing Peter to pay Paul, and we're allowing for actually the savings we have on salary. we have on salaries that we build into these projects. I've shown that in the revenue here. There's a little bit of unrestricted account 104-1 fund balance, $52,000 available. Add all that up, and there's about $341,000 available in those funds, including the amount that I have from stormwater reserve, which is about half of that. That goes towards the projects that you previously authorized us to do. I've included in these numbers the two Cascade Trail projects, which you've seen prior. And I've noted that all of the previously committed projects and then the current grant projects in the detail. The match we're looking for for these two projects is about $60,000. And we're actually short of that based on the funds that we see right here. But as I note in my comments there, the likelihood of us getting all of these grants awarded is probably fairly slim. If we happen to do that, though, I'll have to come back to you, and we'll have to figure out how we're going to come up with that additional $47,000. So all that being said, if you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to try to address them.
I just don't quite understand how, the way I read it, you have your list for matching. I don't understand how stormwater reserve money is used for transportation.
Well, as a part of the two sidewalk projects or trail projects, the Cascade Trail projects, you may recall, we had storm drain replacement as a part of those. And so that's what we had committed these dollars for, is to build that storm drain.
And that counts as your match?
Yes, well.
And this is interesting. This is a big disadvantage we have in not owning the water utility.
Let's buy one.
You look at Anacortes, for example, and, you know, they'll do a project, and they've got water utility, stormwater utility, and sewer utility dollars that all can help with pavement restoration that become match for grant funding. And in our case, water's out, and we're kind of, we don't actually fund stormwater adequately to provide much. You know, the funding that Mark's showing here is actually 100% of our stormwater utility reserve fund. So, you know, we're, you know, Mark has led an incredible expansion effort in terms of infrastructure investment, very successful. But we're literally, you know, spending everything we got, although it's a one-for-10 basis. You know, I mean, it's just amazing what we're getting done. So I'd just point that out, that it's not an atypical tool, and we have fewer choices as to how we can make that match as some of our sister cities do.
So your stormwater reserve is like when we replace the Highway 20 line from, from just Thrifty Foods or whatever it is, on down, that's what we're talking about?
Yes, yeah. And those are projects you previously approved. I included this in here to get you the entire picture, but you've already approved those dollars.
So I was just trying to understand the stormwater fund.
Right, yeah, exactly, yeah. No stormwater funds for these current grant applications.
And, you know, on the stormwater, you know, you heard a request tonight for essentially stormwater repair work. We had a culvert that had to be removed last week that failed earlier in the season. Those people wouldn't mind getting it put back in. So far, we've said no. You know, and so I always hate to be the bearer of bad news, but we know that we have not adequately funded stormwater since its inception, and we continue to have challenges. You know, the most recent one, prior to the culvert failure out here in your neighborhood, actually, was up in your neighborhood at the, you know, the DNR property, where you had an old line that failed and washed away part of the street. And so, you know, it's something that as we move into the budget season, it's important to be thinking about the fact that we essentially have the same number of miles of stormwater line under the ground as we do sewer. And in sewer, we have a two-person collections team and a couple hundred thousand dollars a year that we've been spending for at least the last, you know, eight or nine years, doing restoration work underground with cured-in-place pipe and manhole rehab. And with stormwater, we've done a little bit of, you know, kind of dig it up ourselves and fix-it work. So.
But Aaron, in the past, stormwater was part of our streets.
But that's, and that's what got it built. And that was cool. But now we don't have any funding to maintain that.
It's just like we used to be able to dump our grass in the trash. Can't do that. So everything keeps getting kicked off. And I mean, I understand, and I know how hard it is, but to the taxpayer, we think we paid for that already. Now we're going to add more.
And they did. They bought it. They did buy it. There's no question. But now they got to buy it again because it's worn out. So there's no mechanism of that to get to buy it again.
So stormwater is a piping system. It's not the ditches and stuff?
Yeah, fruit and ditches.
So up on Fruitdale where the road collapsed, that could be a stormwater problem?
Well, there's a related surface water issue, but I would have a tough time thinking that's a stormwater problem.
Well, if you're talking about those potholes that keep reappearing right there at the Brickyard Crick crossing, that's exactly what it is. In the inspections that we.
I thought you were talking about the road slide.
Oh, you're talking about Fruitdale?
Well, I'll know about any of them.
Yeah. Well, there's one that you pointed out to me a number of times, you know, a pothole that keeps developing there. And Aaron mentioned, we just removed a failed storm drain on Bucko's property this week. And we hadn't been able to get in there because there's been water in it, but now it's dry. We walked on up to the culvert under FNS Gray Road, and it's beginning to fail as well. And we have 15 of those up and down the system that we're going to be in the process of inspecting. We know that one's going. It's going to have to be replaced shortly.
And when those were installed in the 50s, what did they cost, do you think? Is that a $2,500 project?
Yeah, there wouldn't have been a lot of money on.
It doesn't look like it would hold anything, but it does.
And now, you know, these have got to be bottomless fish passage built during the correct season. You know, they're $50,000 projects. So, you know, that's.
$50,000 project, and there's no fish?
Yeah.
But that's the other thing to keep in mind when.
Now, the problem, this lady was talking about, is that a stormwater problem?
It's the crick. So essentially, it's water, surface water. Her particular issue is that, our problem is, is it's an area where there's literally no access to the crick. It's built up on both sides of the crick. There's no way to get equipment in there, and it's an area that is eroding in the bank below the property. So we literally would have to wheelbarrow and pack in anything to repair that. And that's been David's dilemma with that. I talked to him about it before I left for vacation. I thought he was going to call Mrs. Tomlinson back, but, you know, I don't know what happened.
But we aren't going to fix it?
We don't know how to fix it. We can't get at it. It literally, we'll have to walk in there to do it. And it's not a simple matter of just shovels and stuff like that. We're talking cubic yards of material to fill it up. So, but I'll personally go out and look at it tomorrow. I haven't had a chance to do that, and I'll do that and take him, drag him out there with me.
Well, I'll quit asking questions. We'll get back to what we're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But they're related, sort of, you know. But again, this particular thing is for the current TIB applications. And so your action on that is requested.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize staff to apply for the grants identified in this memo and to commit the local match dollars identified in this memo.
Second.
Brett?
Mark, is the creek not low enough that you could get in there with a small bobcat or something?
Well, if we can lower one in with a crane somewhere, we can probably do that. If you've looked at Brickyard Crick, when they built it, they built it with basically one-to-one slopes. You can't drive anything into it. And there's also restrictions under our fish permit, where we actually technically are not supposed to drive anything in the crick, even in the dry.
Because there's so many of them in there.
Like it doesn't change when it floods anyway.
It's like no water.
A lot of the fish that aren't there.
We had a similar washout right at the end of Colfus Mountain Drive last year. And fortunately, it was where we could drive in there. We actually were able to work it from the bank. This one's actually just a little upstream of that, but we don't have that luxury on it. So we'll figure out something. Skyhook, anybody got a skyhook in the garage?
I can borrow my grandfather's.
I was thinking of a helicopter. Somebody needs a helicopter pilot. Okay, I'm going to make a motion. We have a motion by, a motion by Councilmember Waggoner and a second by Councilmember Galbraith to authorize staff to apply for grants identified in this memo and to commit local match funds identified in this memo. Any further discussion?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. We will go to item eight, proposed amendments to Cedar Woolley Municipal Code. And this is John. This is a second read.
Yeah, this is a second read. If you recall, this is a change to, I think it's two, maybe three words in our binding site plan ordinance to make sure that the binding site plan ordinance has the same type of planning review process that is mentioned in our 290 section, which is, talks about process. So it's a very simple change. It's on the verge of, you know, a Scrivener error, very minor. If there's any questions, please let me know.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1819-TAC15, approving amendments to Chapter 16.28 of the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Waggoner and a second by Councilmember Cornigay to approve ordinance number 1819-TAC15, approving amendments to Chapter 16.28 Cedar Woolley Municipal Code. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Okay. Now we come to new business, parking ordinances here.
What you have in the packet is in part a response to the request that we heard, I think, two council meetings ago regarding vehicles that have been parked long-term in front of somebody's house on Brickyard Boulevard. But it's really intended to be broader than that. You know, looking at that particular problem, we could solve it with a number of different tools. We could restrict the time of parking in that particular location. We could do resident permit parking, such as we do in my neighborhood. But neither of those seem to make a lot of sense. And so conceptually, code enforcement officer's idea was, well, why not have a requirement, which is not atypical, this is something that she's been familiar with in other jurisdictions where she's worked, where you have a blanket rule that you cannot park a vehicle on the right-of-way for more than a certain period of time. And then it's enforced on a complaint basis process, including by our own street sweeper and public works crews. We do have vehicles in town that are operable and licensed, therefore they're not junk or abandoned. But they have not moved in so long that there are plants that have taken root into the asphalt around their vehicles. Those would be great candidates for this particular tool, which is a note that says, hey, you got to move your car. You don't have to take it off the street necessarily, but you need to at least move it. We can get in and sweep and so on. So the first section of this ordinance says that you could not leave a vehicle for a consecutive period of longer than 240 hours at any time. So that's 10 days. So once within 10 days, you got to slide your car to a different slot. The second section.
What defines a new slot? A minimum of 10 or 12 feet one way or the other?
I would think you literally would just have to move your vehicle from where you're parked. You could go one spot over, and that would be okay.
What does that do for getting it off the street for people that want, need some, say they have activities at the house and things like that? It's not really solving the problem. It's just moving.
Well, I think for that particular, you know, residence concerns, it would, it would give the code enforcement officer the tool to call the owner of the vehicle and say, hey, listen, your car's been parked for more than a month. You need to move it or I'm going to tow it. And you need to move it just somewhere else. And if they, if they want to do something like that and say, well, I want to play cat and mouse with you. I want to roll it 10 feet forward, then that's true. Although, you know, then they get, they get more attention by doing that. And most people don't play that game. You know, most people when asked would say, okay, you know, where would be a good place to park my car? Or can I drive around the block and park it over here for a week and then move it back for a week? Or whatever. You know, most people do want to comply. And, you know, at least from what I see, most people don't go park their cars in somebody else's neighborhood and just leave them there. You know, that's just a little atypical. You know, you might put it in front of the neighbor across the street from you, but you don't put it two blocks over in front of somebody's house.
We already have coding on the books with, what was supposed to be a test area, possibly expanding to other parts of the city, which was a township, where you have to move on, you can't be there on a Monday because they're going to move their car. I think we copied some of it from Mount Vernon. Why don't, doesn't that just seem like we could just do that along that strip or on Reed Street there?
Well, Reed Street's not the issue.
Oh, whatever it is.
Yeah, Reed Street itself is three-hour parking during the day. You know, so if you look at Reed Street, it's clear and nothing going.
I run it every day.
The question is, at least in my mind, it's probably more appropriately done on our busier streets that get weekly sweeping service. Because the logic behind that rule is, hey, we want to sweep this every week, and we can't do it if you park your car there. So it is, you know, it's a little bit of a hassle for people who live there. And I would, I would guess that the people on Brickyard Boulevard who live there and park their cars probably wouldn't love the idea that they couldn't park their own cars in front of their own homes one night a week. But that's a question you'd have to ask them. You know, I know, at least, and for me, it would be a nuisance if they did that on Telcot every week.
Did you say?
Go ahead, Mike.
So one day a week would be a nuisance?
Yeah, I'd have to remember to move my car that day into the driveway.
All over the United States?
I'm just expressing my own personal opinion, and I think it would be shared by the people who live in the neighborhood.
You just have to remember?
It's different than our.
You got to remember you're trying to solve a problem, not create more problems.
It doesn't. That's, that way the street sweeper can go straight down, clean that place. Old junk cars have to start up and move. The problem's solved. And the street, you know, but we haven't done, I've been promoting this for 15 years and it hasn't happened. So I mean, it's not going to happen. Thanks, Brett, for bringing it up. I think it's an idea, this is kind of weird. We're going to just pick on a certain area and go, we're going to make it here, but you can go park over here. And you just, to me, you're moving the problem to someone else's neighborhood. But whatever.
Did I hear you say that the street sweepers themselves would be kind of monitoring this?
Well, what I said was it would be, enforcement would be on a complaint basis, and the street sweeper could be a complainant.
Oh, everybody in public.
And I expect they would be. You know, they, right now, they have a courtesy card that they put out on a windshield that says, hey, I can't sweep. Would you move? And they don't really get much respect with their card.
This is citywide, right?
Correct.
Yeah, because I almost fell out of my chair when he said a certain area. It's citywide.
This was intentionally drawn citywide because I believe it could be used to solve problems like this all over the place. You know, it's one of those situations where I'm thinking of, I feel like I've seen, maybe I took a picture and showed it with you, a vehicle on Jamison that literally had grass growing into the asphalt. That's a great rig to move so we can get the street tuned up.
I would guess there's, they're not unusual to see them in that situation. So they're probably all over town.
And on the sweeper idea, I'm only suggesting that it's a better fit on arterials than in neighborhoods, at least in my view. And the other thing is, I think if we do it, we need to commit to actually sweeping that week. Because I'd be a little irritated to move, and then the sweeper doesn't even come by. So I think, I think you get out and you move it and you sweep. I think people'd appreciate that.
I think we talked before, too, about maybe making that the same day the garbage trucks came, so.
Exactly.
Trash pickup, sweeper. I mean, I like the direction. I think maybe we could tune this up a little bit. And I'd also like to handle the ones that park on the city right-of-way on the grass. You know what I mean, right? The four-wheel drive that comes up on the grass. And he's not in the way of the street sweeper, but he certainly is an eyesore.
So the council passed an ordinance about, I think we passed that already? Three months ago that would make it for vehicles parked on the grass behind a curb.
Right.
So if it's grass that flows to asphalt. So if it's grass that flows to asphalt or gravel, we didn't say you couldn't, but if it's on a curb, you can't. What, what we're gonna need, frankly, is to get broader support from the police department so it's not just one officer working alone on this problem. We're gonna need our sergeants to own parking and to get patrol out there helping with this problem if we're gonna get meaningful enforcement on it.
When it says vehicles, you're also referring to, on Fridago, there's a trailer parked, there's also a boat parked on the side. As you know, we don't have sidewalks, or at least, we can't see them because they're covered up with moss and grass and vehicles. But normally...
I saw one of those, it was really exciting to see that.
Yeah, they're there, but you have to dig for them. But my point is, it says vehicles, and does that refer to boats and trailers and campers?
Yeah, yeah, vehicles is defined, I'm trying to remember, I think we have that somewhere. I do believe we've got vehicle defined somewhere else, maybe in our existing code, and it's pretty broad.
Okay.
And trailers, the same ordinance that you adopted that dealt with parking on the grass behind a curb also says you can't leave trailers that are unattached on the rights of way. So a boat trailer that's not attached to a tow vehicle is not lawfully parked in the street.
Seventy-two hours.
I forget, I didn't see you in the lower, in the lower seat down there. So there's Officer Carr, for those of you who didn't spot her, in the junior seat. Usually when people sit there, they raise their chair up, just so you know.
I have, thank you. I see her adjusting her arm.
So, so yeah, that, that's out there too. And the idea behind that was, well, you could bring your fifth wheel out, park it provisioned up, get ready to go for the weekend, or the same thing, clean your boat, wax it, whatever it is. So it's, it's room. And, and again, it's, you know, in my mind, there's kinda two, there's, there's two ways to look at it. Those parking issues that are quality of life, that is neighborhood blight-type things, blocking sidewalks, jacked up in the grass, those are the things that I expect the department to be actually proactively looking at. The vehicles like maybe a boat that's parked in front of somebody's house, but it looks good, it's parked normally, nobody cares, nobody's complaining, I'm not worried about that unless somebody calls up and says, hey, we got a concern. And then I would expect somebody would go out and take, take a look at it. So, you know, there's really, we can't, we can't hit every code every time, so some of them we've got to let the residents of Cedar Woolley say, you know, this bothers me, could you do something? And then we go out and work on it. But there are some that we need to do a better job of enforcing because that will raise the bar for the community itself.
Thank you.
I would suggest not doing it on the same day as, as the garbage, you know, because, I mean, the street sweepers...
Because the garbage cans will be in the way?
Yeah, possibly, and, or they fall into the street and, you know, that kinda thing, and it would be more of a nuisance.
But it's a good day to do it because some of the trash falls out, and before it blows away, you pick it up.
Sort of that trash train.
And you try to make it easy on the trash man where they can just come straight down and grab, grab, not have to dive bomb in.
Yeah, especially on a windy day, I guess that's true, you know, where the garbage cans fall over and...
You're right, they are, some streets, they're out in the middle of the street.
Are there any concerns, are there changes that you'd like to see to this as we look at a second reading on August 26th?
If we have them, to whom do we bring them? You, or...
Yeah, or you can talk to our code enforcement officer as well, but I'll be the one to write it.
Okay.
Okay. First reading.
We will go to report of contract, approved and approved.
That's just informational, under our SWMC 2.10406, so the mayor and I have authority to bind the city to contracts that have a value of $10,000 or less, and then we always report those back to you so you know what's going on. So, we don't, we don't ever want the city council to be in the dark about what's happening when you're not meeting. So, there it is.
Okay, we're going to committee reports, and we will start with Sergeant Harris.
Good evening. So, a couple things, just to get you updated on our new officers, Officers Hall and Kate's are off FTO and are on their own. So as of August 1st, they put two more on the street in their own cars, doing their own thing, which is a good thing. Officer Wilson, who just got sworn in tonight, graduated last Wednesday, today is her third day, so she's just observing this week, and then she'll start taking calls for service in the next week and a half with an FTO, which is a field training officer. So McCombs and Carroll, who were part of the four that were last sworn in, are in their third week of training, and it's a three-month training process. So we anticipate those two being out on their own, oh, probably late October, early November, and then Wilson sometime second week in November, is what we're shooting for. So by middle November, we should have every new hire up and running, fully equipped, on the street, doing their own thing. So that's pretty exciting for us, the schedule's actually filling up, we can have bodies to, to do more things, and rather than just responding to calls, we can actually go out and try to prevent problems from happening. So, I'm believing I need to take some notes, and I'll pass on to the rest of the crew, but we'll see what we can do to come up with some of your concerns, but make sure the chief is aware, and I'll pass it on to him as well. And then, my understanding is in front of you, from Chief Tucker, there's a resolution about some of the firearms, we're wanting the surplus. Those changes in regards to different seizures, people turning them in, things that we just had in, in surplus, that we're wanting to get those sold off to a dealer and then be able to buy firearms to help equip our new officers with more current firearms.
So we're looking for a motion to approve the resolution. Normally that'd be a consent item, we thought you could probably be okay with the late materials tonight. They're eager to buy some guns for their new, new people using trade-in guns.
You're gonna buy bullets too?
Yes.
They're well-stocked in ammo, the spending freeze never did apply to ammo.
So that's Resolution 92615.
926. I don't think we used it before.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number 92615, declaring certain property surplus and authorizing its disposition.
Second. Rick.
All right. Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Waggoner and a second by Councilmember Limley to approve Resolution 926 TAC 15, a resolution of the City of Cedar Woolley declaring certain property a surplus and authorizing its disposition. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. What caliber is those glats?
20 caliber.
You can't get one.
No, I'm just curious. All right.
I have a question, I was wondering about the schedule, you talked about that a little bit, with the hiring of all the new officers. Is there a time, is there still a time a day where there's just one officer on duty, or is, or is it completely...
Right now, yes, there is, at times being on vacations, trainings, or just if we have a sick officer, that we do have one person on. We try to limit that time, and I don't really wanna say publicly what timeframe that is. But that is going to end in regards to, once we get the new people up and trained and on the road, we don't see that problem. We're hoping to have a second detective position open up the first of the year so we can get some relief to our current detective. Just one detective is, it's a lot of work for one man or a woman, and so we can have that second person there. Officer Lazaron, if you recall, retired, he's currently helping us doing some provisional work to help us fill the schedule till the end of the year, which is a big relief. He will then be off the schedule, so the new people will be able to fill it in, and we'll, we'll be fortunate enough to be able to add one shift. And that shift will be a power shift, if you will, that will help adjust for the vacations and trainings, to where we can have a minimum of two, sometimes three people on 24 hours a day. Our swing shift is pretty heavy, we'll have three or four people. Right now, you'll see six officers show up on the scene, however, it's because three of them are training. So it looks really heavy and scary, and it's, you know, it makes me proud to have that many there. Once they're on their own, we won't have six, it'll probably just be the three.
Yeah, it looked pretty, last night I saw doubles a couple.
Yeah, pretty much right now, every car has a double, except for Asia.
Yeah, it looked like Adam 12.
Yeah.
Talk to each other, I mean, really though, two people can look more than one. One guy private, some other guys can be looking over there.
And especially with all the new SUVs you got us, the two-person cars, it's, we're looking pretty sharp. So, it's a good sign. We're getting envious of other departments, which is a good thing.
Thank you.
Chief.
Another mayor.
John.
Okay, so, as part of our urban growth area expansion application to the county, we submitted to the county map that shows, shows where we're thinking of possibly expanding our urban growth area to. When we did our buildable lands analysis, it showed us that we need about 77 acres of industrial land and about a much smaller amount, it's hard to say, about, you know, 10 to 15 to 20 acres of residential land, depending on the zoning. So we're, we're traveling down that road of trying to locate that, to expand our urban growth area and locate that. And then it occurred to us that we still have the urban growth area to the west, I'm sorry, to the east of town, sort of the Wicker Road area, east of town out to Fruit Dale Road, largely developed, there's not really any large tracks there, there's a little bit of development potential out there, except for you can't subdivide property out there because there's no sewer available. All of the subdivisions out there are currently, currently served by septic, they're, even if we brought sewer out to them, very few houses, if any, would ever connect to it because they wouldn't want to go through the expense of connecting to our sewer when they've got operational septic. So, that whole 200-acre area is really undevelopable for the city, so we see it as an area that's not gonna see any development, so it's kinda taking up a lot of space in our urban growth area. So, we're looking to eliminate that. So, the, in our application to the county, we requested to completely get rid of that urban growth area, or if not get rid of it, allow the development potential in that area to be applied someplace else because it can't be developed, even though, even though our analysis says you can fit X number of houses out there, and I'm working on putting those numbers together. Even though you can put X number of houses out there, you really can't do it because we can't do any subdivisions and can't provide sewer. So, we've proposed to eliminate that area and move the density up north along Highway 20 and a little bit off of Westerman, off of FNS Grade Road, north of Jones Road. So I put together this map, put it out to the county, we're gonna be discussing it tomorrow at a meeting. In the meantime, you may have seen the notice in the paper, we put a legal notice out for a hearing about this proposal, and the newspaper picked it up and ran a story on page three of Tuesday's paper. They did not, they did not publish the map. So I've been getting a lot of calls and concerns about the hearing being so soon when a lot of the property owners have a lot of questions. So, we had originally published for an August 18th hearing, which is Tuesday night's planning commission meeting. We're backing that off, we're gonna make it a informational workshop for people, that's, people feel a lot more comfortable coming and learning information rather than having to give testimony and, and really be ready to make up their mind on anything. So we're gonna have a hearing, no, a hearing, I'm sorry, canceling the hearing for now, and gonna have a public work session, and get notice out to all of the property owners that are on this map. We're also going to hold one during the day right here on September 15th. I don't have the date in front of me, it's the third Tuesday of next month in September, and we're gonna hold that during the day so people can attend. People who were not able to attend the evening meeting can attend during the day, get a lot more feedback from people that way, and people feel like they're given more opportunity to comment and less, we can address their concerns that things are happening without them being able to give input. So we've extended the timeframe on commenting, we've extended the, the notification period, we're just trying to avoid, avoid people feeling like something's being handed to them and they don't necessarily know what it is. So we're doing our best to have an outreach program on this while at the same time trying to meet county deadlines. So that's what's going on with that. You may hear from some concerned property owners that their property is going to change. What we're doing right now is asking people if they wanna be in the urban growth area or not. We've identified likely areas where we can expand our urban growth area, though we also are very cognizant that when it comes to people's land and any change to their land, they become very concerned very quickly, and often the answer is just no, they don't want anything to change. So we're trying to let people know that if you come into the urban growth area, all that means is you have the ability to annex into the city in the future, should you choose. I'm putting together an informational pamphlet to go with all the notices that explain what is the urban growth area, how it affects their property. Some of the highlights are, if you're in the urban growth area, you can no longer burn brush. That, while that doesn't sound like a big deal, it is. But, you know, on the positive side, you are eligible to annex into the city, you're eligible for city services such as sewer, better police and fire services, and you can subdivide your property, whereas if you're not in the urban growth area, you, you cannot subdivide your property. So those are some of the issues that we're gonna be addressing. It's become quite the topic, moving very quickly, lots of comments generated already, and lots of interest, which is good. We like to have public input, and it looks like we have people paying attention to the planning process, which is always a positive in our eyes. And again, it's just, I wanted to mention it to the council because, you know, when it comes to changing designations on people's property, they become concerned very quickly, and I wanted the council to be prepared to understand why people are coming to you with complaints, should they come to you.
John?
Martin? Go ahead.
How much does the annexation of the Northern State property affect the possible urban growth area? I mean, do we need to expand our urban growth so much after we've just accepted such a large piece of our urban growth end?
So, the way that the SCOG planners have been discussing this, and what we're going to be bringing to the SCOG GMA Steering Committee, is a separate employment allocation for the Northern State. Because if the, when the draft environmental impact statement comes out, it's going to say that, it's going to give a numbers range of potential jobs that can be, can be housed out there. And if that number is in the 1,200 or 2,000-figure area, what that would do is use up all of our currently allotted employment throughout the rest of the city, and it would show that we have zero need to expand, to, to add additional commercial or industrial land because we've got now Northern State. So what that would mean is like, all new jobs over the next 20 years would have to go into Northern State because there's no other land available in the city, and that's just not right. So, what we're going to do is, we're pursuing an extra allocation based on the draft EIS number, so we're gonna get more jobs to our allocation. So, in a way, it affects our urban growth area sizing, however, we're trying to address that by treating Northern State as sort of a separate entity.
Where are we at on the annexation? Because at one time it was talking about being done in September.
Yeah, so OFM was here, Office of Financial Management from Olympia was here yesterday and today. I met with them to talk through some of their concerns under the provision... I met with them to talk through some of their concerns under the proviso that was adopted by the legislature that allows the Director of Enterprise Services to sign an annexation petition. They're required to have meaningful consultations with OFM. So, they're completing those consultations now and anticipate having a signed petition to us on Monday. Once that's received, we'll send it over to the county assessor's office, who will then verify the petition's ownership. And after that's done, it will come back to the city council for the completion of the public process. So, I would expect it could very well be in the city, you know, in October.
So, this petition is the one that we assumed was done last spring?
Well, no, what happened in the spring was you had a...
Remember when they said that the state was going to petition?
Yes.
Is that the same subject we're talking about?
Yes.
And I assumed, the way we were told, was the state's going to petition. I assumed it was almost instant.
Yeah, well, no. I can see why you'd think that, but no, that's not how that works.
Because they were talking about being part of the city in September.
Yeah, yeah, or even earlier in the summer was a possibility. So, what the state gave you in the spring was essentially a notice that they intended to use the petition method to come in, and were you interested? The Attorney General's office gave Enterprise Services an opinion that they have the legal authority to sign petitions for all of the properties in the state except for their own. For those, they needed to have a legislative authority. And so, that's why there was a delay, actually, was that they ran a bill through the legislature that specifically says that the director has the authority to petition for annexation for Enterprise Services' own property, or maybe just this one even. I actually don't recall the language. And that didn't happen until the budget was adopted because it was a proviso to the budget. So, it was the very last thing that got done before they skedaddled. It's a very well-oiled machine down there.
Yeah. Maybe if we could put an oil on it, it'll mesh and stop.
I have a question for, I actually have a question on the previous topic about the other UGA we're discussing. Will you know a date for the hearing? If there, I'm assuming there really will be a hearing. When you do the workshop, will you have a date already by then?
Maybe by the second workshop. They're usually held in planning commission meetings, so if the second workshop's going to be the day of the planning, I intentionally had that the afternoon be earlier than the planning commission meetings, in case any of the planning commissioners wanted to come by for that. So, that'll be September 15 or so. So, it wouldn't be till October unless, for some reason, we hear that there's a need to move that date up and have a special planning commission hearing, but I wouldn't expect that. So, I would expect in October, and I'm pulling out my calendar right now to give you some guesstimate dates. So, yeah, the second workshop's going to be on the 15th of September. The planning commission in October is the 20th of October, so that's a likely date. If, we'll see how the work sessions go, and what the public comments are. If it doesn't look like it's going to be able to happen, you know, we might have to change the plan and have more work sessions. But, I would guess likely the 20th of October.
All right. Thank you.
Martin?
Just quickly, Green Street Project's coming along pretty well. They got off to a fairly slow start due to caving soil conditions out on Green Street, but they should finish the sewer work by next week, and they're already building the road sections in behind. The sidewalk construction's going to start later this week. Other than that, our public works crews have been very busy on a variety of projects. They have completed the ballfield work over at Janicki Fields. That's ready for seeding at the end of the month. It's the plan right now. And they've also completed the ditch work over on 205 North Reed and on 127 Central Street to correct those problems over in that area. We'll be going back in and doing some grading and finish up work over the next couple of weeks there to get ready for seeding that. And our crews will be out later this week on FNS Grade Road, cleaning and videoing a very old drain line that runs along the south side of that out to the open ditch at Klinger Street and hoping to solve some longstanding drainage problems in that area. And that's pretty much it, other than writing the grant applications you heard about earlier tonight. Thank you.
Eric?
A couple items. One, on the Northern State project, we're looking at another three-entity joint meeting the week of September, the 7th. That's Labor Day week. This one would be another day meeting. It would be located at the county commissioner's hearing room so they could have it on camera. And we're still waiting to hear back from the county on the timing. I think we were hoping it could occur on that Wednesday, like at 10:00 in the morning. So, once we know more, we'll let you know, and hopefully we can get at least a majority of the city council there. The purpose of the, yeah, the purpose of this meeting will be to, you know, essentially to hear from anybody in the public about any concerns or interest or support they have for the project and the proposal that was made following the last three Entity Joint Meeting to the state. So, the state's kind of interested to hear, you know, more public comment. And, you know, we were trying to think of an effective way to do that. That seems to be a way that's worked in the past, is to have a meeting and invite people to come to the microphone and say what they think. So, that's in the works. We've got two other items. One is, on your table there is this picture, and we talked about this briefly back in June. It's a traffic circle that we've proposed building at Dunlop and Township, and in fact, have planned the beginning of this project, I think, for the next week or so. And prior to actually constructing it, I just wanted to bring it back before you for any concerns. This is something that is not, it's not really an extraordinary concept, at least in my mind. It's not really a city council action item unless you want it to be one. It's something that would be built within budget. I gave you some pictures, though, that I don't think I had last time. I believe I showed you the plan before, but I don't think I showed you the photos from Seattle. And that's really where this plan came from. So, what you see here is David Lee's adaptation of the Seattle specification mapped onto the aerial in the actual location. It's a 16-foot diameter traffic circle. The photos show you the construction as well as a completed project in Seattle. And of course, it talks a little bit about how Seattle does this and their process. We're responding to a request from at least two of the neighbors at that intersection. I've heard from those neighbors that, in fact, all four neighbors are supportive and would like to be involved in doing the landscape maintenance on this project. I'm interested in it for two reasons. One, the, you know, the reported concerns about safety, and what you have there is you have a transition from the city speed limit of 25 to the county's speed limit of 35 that occurs at the southern edge of the Dunlop Street right-of-way. So, it's kind of an awkward placement. You literally have the acceleration occurring in the intersection. So, it's a challenge because the people who live there say, boy, they're going fast. And, you know, 35 actually feels pretty fast in a neighborhood-type environment, but the speed limit is 35 until you reach the southern edge of Dunlop. And then, it becomes 25 because that's the city limits. Our limits actually jog along Dunlop's right-of-way. They go east, and then they go south to take in our riverfront property. So, this would provide that traffic calming measure of you have to slow down to go around it. And then the other, the other interest I have is it's a fairly public and well-traveled location. This is something that I think people on Jamison would like to see as part of our Jamison project. And so, I'm interested in getting one of them installed in town so we can all see how they work. You know, we've seen them in Seattle, we've seen them in Bellingham, but we haven't seen one in Seadrwelly. So, as a model, a demonstration, I think it'd be nice to see one. And then I suspect we'll start to see requests for some of these in other parts of the city. And then we could, you know, consider how to fund them and build them and maintain them if that's something that we're interested in. So, I guess what I'm asking you tonight is, if they're ready to start, is there any reason to put the brakes on the project, or are you comfortable letting this happen?
Go.
And I think Tony's here, and this is the only roundabout that Tony supports.
This is not a roundabout. This is a bona fide traffic circle, not a roundabout.
Well, what's interesting about this one is I drive in Seattle all the time, and they are able to go left at these. Like, if you're coming up to one of these, you can go left without going around the circle. You could just turn the left, which, is that right? That's what I was told, and I've been doing it.
Sergeant Harris will know that answer.
What do you think?
I don't think so.
He has to look at the circle itself.
They're about this size?
Yeah.
On one way as you can.
It depends on what time of night we're talking about. Deacon's trying.
Yeah, I was curious, too.
And the traffic motions that were studied on this would expect that regular cars would actually kind of go around it like you would a roundabout, but in fact, you can't do that with large trucks. So, the service trucks that would go to the memory care facility would not be able to go all the way around it. They would have to do the more curtailed motion. And I suppose the same would be true of the fire chiefs' larger rigs over there, too.
Garbage.
Yeah, maybe. And they probably wouldn't, too. They'd just take the shortest path, so. Okay. Well, then, look for construction to occur here in the next couple of weeks. They'll be out saw cutting to provide for drainage, and there's a monument in the middle of the intersection that we've got to protect. And then, I would think it'd probably be actually built in, what, early September?
Of this year, right?
This year. This is a 2015 project.
As a government project, so I'd ask that question.
Well, if we consult with OFM, it might take longer. So, the last item I've got tonight is a request to hire a vacant position. Our building department has really taken off in terms of permits. The revenues are up, and our staff is having a very difficult time providing a quality customer service. Right now, you've got John, and you've got Joanne, and you've got Jack Moore on a contract. So, if you come in today to do a building permit, you will be received happily with the honor by Joanne. She'll bring it in. She'll process the paperwork portion of it. We'll then take that permit review process, hand it over to Jack Moore, who will do it on a weekend or the evening. And then, when it's time to build your project, inspections will occur, either when John is able to do it, and anytime he's out doing inspections, he's kind of falling behind on our GMA update planning stuff. Or, if he's not available, then Jack comes over and does it after 5:00, when he finishes his regular job. So, I've been very reluctant. John has asked a number of times, as things have ramped up, to make the request to you because of the concern about whether this would be sustainable. And I'm convinced that we need it now, and if it's not sustainable, I'm committed to reducing the position before it becomes a burden. And economically, we're, you know, we're about $55,000 above our budget for our building department revenue year-to-date. So, this is not a question of finding new money. You know, this is a service that's funded by those who are using it. The trouble is, today, we're just not providing the service we'd like to provide. The cost of the position is fixed by our contract, and it's a beginning salary of $3,129 a month. I'm a little concerned about that, although we'll have to, if you approve this, we'll go out and do the best we can. The marketplace tells us that the average is running about $5,500 a month for cities of our size, so we're coming in a little substantially thinner than that. But, you never know. It may be somebody who lives here and can make that work and would be a good fit. So, that's what I'm asking for, is we can't fill it without your authorization. We can certainly fund it, but we can't actually go through the process. So, I'm looking for a motion to authorize hiring a building inspector and plans examiner. Building inspector, plans examiner.
I move to go along with the process to hiring a building inspector? Is that everything? Okay.
That works.
Second?
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Corningey, a second by Councilmember Limley to approve hiring a building inspector at my $3,100 amount.
Yeah, whatever, it's fixed in the contract. So, if we've got the approval on the position, we're good to go.
I don't know how much in benefits they'll get.
A lot.
Yeah, so, you gotta add all that up. That's, they're probably getting five grand or something. All right. Any more discussion?
Yeah, just to be clear, you committed to, if there's a downturn in demand, we're going to have to eliminate this position. It's got to pay for itself.
Yeah, the commitment is that it would not become a drag on the budget. So, it would be funded within the building department's revenue, and if our revenues are declining, then we'll come back and talk with you about it. But, I would say we will not have a lot of flexibility. We'll need to lay off the position and kind of limp through like we've done for the past several years until, you know, things pick up again.
Well, I know John's busy because, you know, I come down here two or three times a week, and he's going out the door with a stack of papers. So, I've been there at the desk when people come, and, you know, Joanne only does Joanne's work, and a lot of times, there's demand for more than that. So, I'm seeing that happen at the counter myself.
We have enough money to cover this, you said?
Yeah.
In the building department?
We do.
Does that include benefits and everything?
Yes. Yeah, so, we're $54,000 ahead year-to-date, and if we were to begin this process today, you know, a best-case scenario might be mid-September, go live, or in early September. So, you're looking at, you know, essentially five-twelfths of the year in this position. If it happened to be a full family, fully loaded, you know, it'd be probably around $75,000 a year. So, we'd be looking at five-twelfths of that, or about, you know, $30-ish thousand. And that wouldn't count any revenue that we would expect to receive for the last five months of the year.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think that'll be an issue for us.
Plus, there should be a statement.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Past unanimous, okay.
Appreciate that. And if you know of anybody who's a competent building inspector, please send them our way.
They'll hear. Word'll get out. Patsy?
The Finance Department's been quite busy providing support for the rollout of the recycling and yard waste program, as well as getting billing for the yard waste customers. Several people have called with new service. We got the list from Waste Management of current yard waste customers, but we're getting more, almost each day, it seems like. So, we're keeping quite busy between that and all the flyers and handouts and things. And it's a sign of the end of summer that we're beginning our pre-budget work. So, 2016 budget work is coming sooner than we all think.
Okay. I just want to comment on Patsy at this time. Washington Finance Officers Association has informed us that she's got the Professional Finance Officer Award. This is what, for the seventh year in a row?
Wow.
And so, we're really lucky that we got Patsy here doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Kevin? I'd like to invite everybody to the Skagit County Fair tomorrow at 5:00. We got the Seadrwelly cheerleaders that put on a good show. We've got Derrington Concrete, Seadrwelly, Burlington, Mount Vernon, LeConner, Anna Cordis, all the cheerleaders in Skagit County, plus four youth groups, including a special needs cheerleader group, the little kids. So, it's the biggest spectator event at the fair, so if you want to support the Seadrwelly girls, come on down at 5:00 tomorrow night. The place will be packed.
The place will be packed.
You're doing the car show. What day's that?
That's Saturday. I'm the emcee tomorrow. I'm the one that invented this thing. And then, the car show's Saturday, so.
Appreciate it. Jermaine?
Well, and the open mic on that, for the fair is on Thursday, I believe. Thursday starts at like 2:00, and I know the OAS's teen shelter kids will be there, and a lot of local kids playing music and things like that. But there's a lot going on this weekend, too. But for the following weekend, I just wanted to mention that by the time we have our next council meeting, tickets will probably be sold out for Toys for Tots, because it's not something people normally think about in August. But August 29th at the Eagle Haven Winery, tickets are for sale. It's a huge fundraiser, so probably be a good time to get tickets. That's about it.
Brenda?
I've been today.
Keith?
Yeah, hopefully, my nephew will be playing the same day, so come see the cheerleaders and everything. I want to talk about the skate park, since that letter was in the paper about somebody couldn't ride his bike. And of course, you can't ride your bike, because it says no bicycles. But since that happened, it's like they're testing us. There's more bikes out there than I've ever seen. And I think, I guess I'm looking at Jason. I want to see those guys squeezed a little bit, because if they're...
Grab them out daily.
Grab their bikes and hold them for a little while, so they're a little bit scared. I mean, I don't want you to keep a kid's bike forever, but I think they should be a little bit scared, because that thing was built for skaters. And if the bike people want to build something, I think the city would be happy to work with them. We'd love to do something like that.
Down by Riverfront, out in the woods.
And there's another one by Bingham Park.
Well, maybe they need something better. I'm not saying that they don't, but that's not the place, and they need to stay out of it.
And you want to mention the reason they're not allowed is because it damages the skate park. It's not because they don't like bikes.
Bike, you know, collisions, I mean, those, those bikes weigh a lot. They're going faster than the skateboard, and the collisions are pretty violent, so that's another.
That's all I have.
It's not just the concrete, it's, it's safety for the kids that are using it properly.
Hugh?
I want to make notice of the Arts Council putting on their fundraiser at the Swenomish, behind the Swenomish Hotel, and it was well-attended, I felt. I didn't hear about the finances of it, but it seemed like it was, it was a lot of fun and extremely good food. And I heard someone make a comment from the podium that it might move closer to Seidrooly. And, you know, I always have hopes that it might move in the city limits of Seidrooly, or at least, at least in our jurisdiction.
They had it, they had it at Eagle Haven, I think, the year before last.
Two years ago?
Right.
Two years ago, because last year they had it.
I think that's the future vision, too.
Yeah. So, that, I mean, and that's what they want to do again, so they'd like to have it there.
That would be good. That's all.
No. Brett?
Just to add on to Keith's, you know, I think in the beginning, when we first opened the park, I think that bikes were confiscated, and I don't know by which means we did that, but I think it'd be, I mean, you know, you go to parks all over, bikes are prohibited. And I just think...
When we do confiscate them, we do it for 10 days.
Okay.
So, we keep them locked up for 10 days, and that doesn't get to work out.
That's fair. It's a long time. Because when I was a kid, I used to get, you know, I didn't have a skate park, but I got chased by the police all the time for skateboarding where I wasn't supposed to. And, you know, you, you would do this several times a week. You know, if they took my skateboard away, I think I'd probably think differently. But they never did, so.
You're a criminal.
And then, Seidrooly's paint-out art show, there's an artist reception on the 14th. That's pretty cool. And then, Mark, congratulations to Debbie. We're better than one-third of the, or two-thirds of the state's wastewater treatments plants, so I think that's pretty exciting.
Mm-hmm.
Give congratulations to Debbie and crew.
Say that. I don't have to say that. Good. Also, before we adjourn, there was great music last Sunday at Riverfront Park, and there'll be another show this last one, probably Sunday.
Airband, always good.
6:00.
So, we have a need to motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, stand. Thank you. Bye.
Oh, yeah.
Cut them FYI. I'm going to be gone, always.